You have a low call, please be.
Mr. Delaporte?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence Denny?
Here.
Mr. Bor?
Here.
Mr. Lamont?
Here. All right, special meeting tonight, first order of business is adjourned public hearing, appeal number 197689, commercial variance, Tarpon Towers II LLC wireless communications facility, seeking an area variance 24081G4C2 of the district regulations in an R40/80 zoning district where no tower can be located closer than 750 feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit, the applicant can provide 678 feet to 106 Caroline Drive East, tax grid number 605603261413, thus requesting a variance of 72 feet. Where no tower can be located closer than 750 feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit, the applicant can provide 558 feet to 108 Caroline Drive East, tax grid number 605603259396, thus requesting a variance of 192 feet. Where no tower can be located closer than 750 feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit, the applicant can provide 732 feet to 107 Caroline Drive, tax grid number 605603238390, thus requesting a variance of 18 feet. Where no tower can be located closer than 750 feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit, the applicant can provide 585 feet to 114 Caroline Drive East, tax grid number 605603250363, thus requesting a variance of 165 feet. Where no tower can be located closer than 750 feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit, the applicant can provide 550 feet to 110 Caroline Drive East, tax grid number 605603255378, thus requesting a variance of 200 feet. Where no tower can be located closer than 750 feet on a horizontal plane to an existing dwelling unit, the applicant can provide 649 feet to 116 Caroline Drive East, tax grid number 605603242352, thus requesting a variance of 101 feet. The property is located at 110 Chelsea Road and is identified as tax grid number 605603339420. Okay. Could I have a motion, please, to open the adjourned public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public.
Can I have a second?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Jim, would you like to address the audience?
Sure. So, this is on, this is an adjourned public hearing. The last time a public hearing, the last time the zoning board held a public hearing on this matter was back on September 22nd, 2020. That was the day after the planning board issued a positive declaration under SEAKER. Subsequent to that, on October 16th, 2020, Verizon and Tarpon Towers commenced an action in the federal court alleging violations of the shot clock, which is in place under the Federal Telecommunications Act as well as the regulations of the FCC. The town had defended that lawsuit, and on January 31st, 2022, Justice, United States District Court Judge Kenneth Karas issued a decision in the case after a motion for summary judgment. In that decision, the judge found that the Town of Wappinger collectively being the zoning board and the planning board, although it didn't really allege any actions on the part of the zoning board, had violated the shot clock and had ordered that the Town of Wappinger issue an approval on the application within 60 days of the date of that order. That 60-day clock will expire on April 1st. Under the courts, one of the options that the court had and which Tarpon Towers had requested was that the court issue the approval outright, and the court declined to do that and instead remanded the case back to the zoning board and the planning board to consider the application and impose any reasonable conditions that it might deem appropriate under the circumstances. So, in, as a result of the order of the federal court, that effectively negated the positive declaration of the planning board, and pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C40, it says that the actions of any court are deemed to be type 2 actions under SEAKER. And as we discussed at our last meeting, there's a case, Lucas versus the Planning Board of the Town of LaGrange, which deals with a very similar circumstance where the Town of LaGrange Planning Board had issued a negative declaration, and the federal court had ordered the approval of a cell tower, and the federal courts found that SEAKER was concluded as a type 2 action by virtue of the order, the issuance of the order of the federal court. So, this, the zoning board had held a public hearing on June 23rd, 2020, back in COVID. That first public hearing was a Zoom meeting, and then subsequently, that first public hearing was adjourned until July 28th, 2020. And subsequent to that time, the zoning board was basically in a holding pattern until such time as the planning board acted with respect to SEAKER as the planning board was lead agency. So, the board, this board did not have an opportunity to, to act on the requested variance. This is an area variance, and the standards for an area variance are set forth in the decision, but the standards in this case are, in essence, not necessarily germane because under New York law, a cell tower is considered to be a public utility, similar to a power plant or power transmission lines, gas distribution facilities, public works facilities, things like that. So, there's a lesser standard under the public utility doctrine, which in essence says that where the applicant demonstrates that there is a need to be met, and the, the proposal will not create a substantial impact in the community in which it's located, the variance should be granted. So, that is the standard by which this board would be obligated to act, notwithstanding the decision of the federal court. So, and as part of the decision that the federal court looked at, one of the issues that was germane was whether or not there was a gap in service and whether or not this proposal would satisfy that gap. And that issue was determined in the, the federal court found that that to be, that there was in fact a gap of service and that this proposal would in fact fill that gap, and that was in essence one of the reasons why it reached the decision that it did. One of the other issues under the Federal Telecommunications Act that frequency, frequently comes up is with respect to radio frequency transmissions. There is concern on the public, by the public, I should say, on the part with respect to radio frequency transmissions from towers. But under the Federal Telecommunications Act, which is found at 47 USC 332 and subdivision C7 Roman numeral four, provides that no state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, or modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulate, regulations concerning such emissions. So what that is saying is that this board cannot consider any effects of radio frequencies where the applicant has received approval from the FCC, which in fact it has in this So, having said that, the zoning board in this case is constrained in its discretion by virtue of a number of factors. In essence, the, the Federal Telecommunications Act is in some respects an extension of the public utility doctrine, and what the federal court, federal, what Congress had determined is that cell towers serve a broader public good and that the ability for municipalities to restrict their placement is limited in scope. Primarily, the, the limitations in which the, once there is a determination that there is a gap in service and the location is appropriate, the limitations that the, the local board, such as the ZBA or the planning board, has the ability to look at aesthetic impacts from the, the proposal and impose certain conditions with respect to that, which again was what the court had ordered in this case. As part of the decision, one of the things that the ZBA can do is impose certain conditions with respect to the grant of the variance. We, the last time the board met, there was a discussion regarding restricting the use of the property that is the subject of this application within the 750-foot radius around the tower. There, in the original draft of the decision that I had proposed, there was some limitations regarding the clearing of trees and erection of buildings to maintain the buffer between the tower and surrounding houses, but again, this is just a suggestion in the draft, so it's open for discussion of the board. Having said that, I can, with respect to the typical criteria for granting an area variance, the criteria would be, is there an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, which, you know, in the case of a cell tower is probably, most definitely yes, cell towers typically change the character of the neighborhood. Is there a benefit, is the benefit obtainable by other feasible methods? And that was an issue that was hotly debated at the planning board and as well as in the litigation. The federal court had found that they did not, it did not believe that there were other feasible methods for locating the cell tower. The variance here is substantial. It's a 200, at the greatest, the, there is a requirement that there's 750 feet clearance on a horizontal plane from the tower to a, to a dwelling, and here, the smallest distance is to 110 Caroline Drive East, which is 550 feet. So they're requesting a variance of 200 feet where 750 is required, so that would be substantial. And then, is there an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions? As I noted previously, with respect to cell tower emissions, this board is prohibited from looking at the environmental effects of any radiation in the RF spectrum. The other concerns would be potentially with respect to impacts on land clearing or stream crossing wetlands impacts, which in this case are pretty minimal. So, with that said, I think the board can open it up to any comment from the public.
Okay, what I'd like to do is if anybody's here to speak, and I'm sure certainly would appear that way, on behalf of this application, we're going to hear everybody's comments. However, we like to limit folks to three minutes, if possible. So if anybody wants to start, I'd like the first person to come up to the mic and, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Lou Benya, 90 Chelsea Road. So I think your opening statements are pretty much, pretty much nailed it. Six variances? Six vari, not one or two, but six variances?
Correct.
Do you see a problem with that? You have a 175-foot tower, 550 feet to our backyards. That's pretty close. Could understand if it was maybe one or two variances, maybe a driveway or a swimming pool, but six variances? I think you picked the wrong location here. This is, this is not good. I had asked a question about a year ago, I know this is zoning, not planning, in regards to the fire department, our volunteer fire department, has anyone even consulted with them if they have the capability of putting out a 175-foot structure fire in case this thing goes ballistic and catches on fire? You know how close that is to our homes? You don't have the 750 feet. It's not there. And as I said, if it's one or two variances for 50 feet, 30 feet, we wouldn't be here. Hell, we wouldn't be here if you had the 750 feet, it'd already been done. Problem is, you don't. You don't. There are better places, and we have submitted so many different places for this cell tower to be, but not on a horse farm, on, what is it? On the Wappinger Falls side, 30 acres? Are you kidding me? That's not good. That's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate the comments.
Hi, my name is Mark Springer. I live at 108 Caroline Drive East. So my property is one of the ones being requested on a variance, and it's actually the second closest to the tower here, so it's a 192-foot variance being requested. I guess, you know, just have a few comments. The attorney here mentioned that the wetlands is not really a consideration here. If you actually walk onto that property, over the last 10 years, it has become a wetlands. There's literally a lake that has drained out from Chelsea Ridge Apartments into that entire property behind our yard. So there is a definite environmental impact from the wetlands back here. There's actually between where the cell tower is and our property, there's a beaver dam with a family of beavers living there, so that, you know, there's definite wildlife right there between that. And I guess, you know, again, looking at the property, I don't know if there's restrictions if you're, you're being held by the, the federal court's, you know, decisions. Are there restrictions you can put in place that are, the tower can only be so high? Can you make them lower the tower? Can you make them pick a different location on the property? Because move it back so it's not within 750 feet. I mean, I don't know, obviously, we don't want a tower at all, but if you're going to be restricted by that, are those types of things possible? And then finally, barring all of that, are there things in cell tower technology that help shield them to make them more invisible or more environmentally, you know, less impactful? Those are considerations I'd want them to provide to you to know. But ultimately, yeah, this is a lot of properties, and the variance, if you really, if you, if you were to draw a circle around the 750 feet, that does go across lines, it encompasses the entirety of my property. It encompasses the, you know, highway, the road right in front of our yard, and across the street into the neighbors across the streets. You're talking about going across a, a road as well, and I would echo as well the fire concerns, because if there, if there is a fire there, it's just wood, you know, it's wooded area, and there's no easy access other than the service road they're going to build to, to put this thing up.
Yeah, well, understood. I appreciate the comments again.
Thank you, sir.
It's like the environmental impacts and some other things. The only issue is really before this board tonight is the distance, right?
Yeah.
And whether the tower could be taller or smaller. There are certain restrictions we can impose with the variance, which we'll get into a little bit later, but not a lot.
Thank you.
Sure.
Number 106 Caroline Drive, East Caroline Drive. The way I get this is it's a done deal, right?
I'm sorry, say it again.
This is a done deal?
Yeah.
You're being forced to do this, whether we want it or not, so.
The federal court has made the decision.
Yeah, you're, you're going to have to vote for these variances, even though we told you we don't want them, right?
The federal court has made the decision.
Yeah. It's a shame that our planning board failed us, because they had an opportunity to shoot this down the right way, and they didn't. There was a lawyer in here that gave them every, you know, he spoon-fed everything to them on how they could have done it. Instead, they left the shot clock running, and now we're forced on us. It's a pity.
From what I understand.
Give me a minute, please.
I'm Carla Springer, 108 Caroline Drive. You're planning or hoping to put your cell tower within 550 feet of my house where my children sleep. You can't really tell me what the effects of the radiation might be, but I'm sure that you would not want to have a cell tower within that range of your own home. Any one of you, I'm sure, would not like to have that radiation within that range of your children's heads. We're talking health. You obviously are going with the federal regulation, they don't care about our health, but you are the people that we, we requ, we expect to care about us, not the federal government, they don't care. They see paperwork, they read words, they put it through, they don't know the people. They don't care about our health. I assume that you're in our neighborhood, you care. You care about our health, I assume. You care about our, our home prices, that they're not going to go up or down or whatever it is, they're not going to be ruined because there's a cell tower in our backyard. You care about the environment. We have blue herons in our backyard, we have eagles, we have these amazing little crazy bats, which I forget the name of what kind of bats they are, but they're, the wetlands are full of amazing creatures. You can come to our house, you can look in our backyard, you can see them, you can see the heron, you know, flying around. I just, you're a new group of people, and I think that you most likely would not have made the same mistakes that were made prior to your being on this board. But I don't think that we should be, that we should suffer the consequence of the last board not making this, not getting things done within the right timeframe. If there are money that should be paid, and you have to pay your fines for not making that SEAKER or whatever it is, then you should pay it. Why are we being penalized when the board made a mistake? You guys know what you're supposed to do. If I make a mistake, I own up to it and I pay whatever I'd have to pay. If you make a mistake, you should own up to it and pay the price. There's a lot of money floating around, I'm sure, somewhere in the world here. Pay the fines and stop the cell tower. That's the natural way that things should happen. And if you don't believe it should happen that way, then I'm sorry, I think you're wrong, and I don't think you care about our community if you choose a cell tower instead of people's lives. And I thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Chris Barkley, 86 Chelsea Road. Obviously, you can see by the, the folks who turned out tonight, that we don't think this is an appropriate placement for a cell tower. I'm hoping the zoning board had read the, all our comments and went to the, to the planning board. There were a lot of comments, a lot of documents I went through saying why we think it should be there. And I understand now that we have the federal, the judge's ruling, but I guess if I could ask the town attorney, if you don't mind, did the ruling actually say the town has to approve this? I mean, I think we, you kind of alluded to, essentially, that's what I'm saying, but if, if, that's, otherwise.
It actually says. So with respect to 47-page decision, on page 46, the highlight, the heading is conclusion, and says, "For the foregoing reasons, the court grants plaintiff's motion with respect to its first claim for violation of Section 332(c)(7b) Roman numeral 2 and the shot clock order, and denies plaintiff's motion with respect to its claims for violation," which is deprivation of effective prohibition of the cell tower. "Accordingly and conversely, the court denies the town's motion with respect to the first claim and grants it with respect to the second claim. The town is hereby ordered to render a decision on the application within 60 days of this opinion and order. The clerk is respectively directed to terminate the pending motions."
I'm not an attorney, but it says the town has to make a decision.
Correct.
Does it say, you have to say yes?
It does not have to say, it does not say that we have to say yes, but based on the subject matter of the.
So what if, what if this board said no? What's, what would happen?
We would be involved, we would, the plaintiffs, the Tarpon Towers, would go back to court and ask for the court to issue the permits rather than, you know, this board. So the ability to impose any conditions would go out the window.
So this, so this board can say, we don't want to do this?
Correct.
And say no? And make the judge make the deci, the federal judge make the decision, and the town can make its case. I'll assume the applicant goes, says, the town screwed up, they should have, they have to say yes to this. Our attorney presumably. Our attorney, presumably, the gentleman we hired, the town hired, could make it, put in his documentation saying, "No, we really didn't, we didn't." And maybe it's a 99% chance the federal judge will say, "Well, you gotta do it." At least these folks can say that they kind of went with the will of what the neighborhood wants, as opposed to one homeowner who wants to do with, you know, wants the tower, as opposed to the folks here who don't think that the tower is appropriate. Is that reasonable?
Well, I mean, I think that, again, from, based on the decision, it is pretty clear that the judge would grant, should this, should either of the boards not grant, should not grant the approval, the court would in fact find, I believe, in favor of the applicant. And in that case, there would not be any conditions on the permit. So, in all likelihood here, so what, what in essence the court here is, our understanding of the decision is that the court has sent it back so that, based on the facts of the case, the zoning board and the planning board can impose certain conditions based on the facts on the ground to make it less of, less of an impact on it.
And I won't speak for my neighbors, that would be a bit to them, but it would seem 150-foot cell tower is going to be, it's not going to disappear, you can't yet unsee it. From my backyard, it's going to be 150 feet, and we have a nice five-acre piece of property right there in the corner. And our neighbors all have wonderful pieces of property, so whatever are the conditions, so...
The discussion with respect to that on the planning, what the planning board had when they discussed this matter was that it would be painted in a matte gray finish, so that it would not be reflective and be, you know, the least visible. They did not believe that a pine tree-looking thing would be appropriate, based on the trees and everything else. With respect to the height of the tower, what was raised, that was one of the things that was discussed in the litigation and also before the planning board. And what the expert that the town hired indicated was that he believed that reducing the tower height would require, would necessitate another cell tower in another location. So one of the things that the town code provides is that if you're going to put in a cell tower, that it should be designed in such a way as to accommodate multiple antenna for various carriers to reduce the number of cell towers throughout the town. So as far as the height issue, I don't think, I don't think the court would ever reduce the height.
I get, my point was, you can do anything you want to a cell tower. If you're driving up the freeway, it looks like a cell tower, in my opinion. If you're driving, you can put pine cones on it, pine needles, or whatever else. To me, it sort of looks like a cell tower. Again, I don't want to speak for my neighbors in terms of the variances, if that's beneficial to them, that, you know, that... I don't want, that's, that's up to them. But there's no reason, in reality, that these folks can say, can't say no, and have it, and be what it may. Nobody here is going to jail if they, nothing's going to happen to anybody if they, if they say no, and...
And honor their wishes.
And honor the wishes of the, of the majority of the folks who live in that neighborhood do not want them, except one, that I'm aware of. Nobody else has come up to me and said, "Yes, I'd love to have the cell tower." So just to, to you folks, I've served on municipal boards before myself, and it is okay to say, say no, and nothing personally is going to happen to you. You're not going to get doctor pay or anything else, and you can say no. And if it gets up to make the federal judge decide, deciding, like I said, it's probably a good chance, based on case law and other rulings, that that's may, you know, may happen. At least you folks here can say you did the right thing. Thank you.
Brian Fisterl, 10 Caroline Drive, West. You just brought up the fact that their cell tower in this decision was based on the fact that they don't want to build another tower, but they are building another tower. Tarpon is building a tower in Town of Fishkill at the Southern Dutchess Country Club. And the paperwork that they filed at the beginning of this, whatever this, we want to call it, they said that they couldn't build in Fishkill, but they clearly can. So what other options did they actually follow? And as far as the coverage goes, into account the second tower during the test? That's only my question or my statement, it's just more things to think about. Because the Town of Fishkill did approve it, it's going in the Southern Dutchess Country Club, right off the off-ramp to 90. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen McMarbotz. I live at, on 94 Chelsea Road. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Barclay said. We actually really need you guys to say no. We need to know that you're behind us and that you care about us. And the mistakes that the other board made, we should not be penalized for that. And whatever happens, happens, we'll have to live with it. But we really need for you to say no. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Mercy Wagman. What I don't understand is we go through...
Address.
Oh, sorry, 50 Old Troy Road. Thanks, Becky. What I don't understand is we go through kind of this risk analysis of if we say yes, we get to choose the paint color, doesn't seem like a great condition, you know? So, you know, if we go with the risk of having the federal court, which I don't know if it'd go before the same judge, may go before a different judge?
It's going to go before the same judge.
The same judge? Okay, so what kind of conditions are available to us? And that's what I don't think I fully understand. Can we do bonding?
Well, one of the conditions that the board is considering with respect to 750-foot variance is to prohibit any clearing of the existing trees that are there, which are a buffer between the houses and the cell tower.
So the risk would be if we, if this board said no, that the judge might say, "Go ahead with it anyway," and that they would clear the property?
Yes.
So that, that's something we'd have to take in consideration. See, I don't, I don't fully understand what power, what kind of things that we could put in place, and whether that outweighs taking another shot at this and, and explaining some of the issues that the neighbors feel, and, and kind of having another chance at saying no.
Well, I mean, again, you know, I don't, I don't know if there was a discussion. Kind of surprised that no one intervened in the action in the federal court on the part of the neighbors. I don't know if that was considered.
Well, we can have a sidebar discussion on the communications about all of this. But I really think we ought to lay out and have a really clear understanding of what kind of conditions can be put in place to protect the neighbors, and does that outweigh the risk of losing and another, another attempt at going to the federal court?
I mean, I don't, again, the likelihood of the court not approving this tower, I think, is, is infinitestable based on the decision. I mean, the, the court basically took some of the, you know, said some of the arguments were specious, and, you know, particularly with respect to, you know, the coverage. I mean, a municipality is very limited with respect to, and again, it's intentionally done because of the Federal Telecommunications Act. You know, the standards are similar for citing of power plants, citing of transmission lines. And the idea, the legal idea is that these are a benefit to the community as a whole, and ultimately, somebody has to bear, bear the burden. Some property owners bear more of a burden than everyone else. I mean, it's just, that's basically what the Public Utility Doctrine says, and that's more or less what the federal telecommunications...
Right, but part of that burden, we ought to, as a town and as a community, say, "What are we going to do to protect or to help mitigate this?" So anything that we can do to get whatever we can out of Verizon, I think we ought to have a really robust discussion, understanding it's March 15th, and you have to have the decision by April 1st, so that's a little awkward. But what kind of things can we put in place? And what kind of, what have other municipalities done? What, you know, what, what's the leading thinking on this, on how do you mitigate? Because no one wants this, right? So how do they mitigate it? And what kinds of concessions can they get out of utilities that are basically lining their own pockets?
The mitigation is typically camouflage-type, make it look like a, make it look like a light...
An upside-down toilet.
Make it look like a tree, make it look like, you know, I mean, unfortunately...
But I know, but there's things like, for example, anybody who wants to, you know, is it with some fire's corners run? The guy wants to take down some trees. We want to bond from them, you know, that that's done well. So is there some kind of bonding things that we can do? And what, what happens when this thing gets decommissioned? Is the town going to be stuck with some stupid thing stuck in the air for the next 20 years? Like, should we be asking for a bond that if, and this thing is decommissioned, that they take it down and restore the area?
Well, again, typically, that's, this again, they're not the property owner, they're a leasehold. So that's typically a condition in the lease with the property owner that should no longer be used as a cell tower, and the lease ends, the improvement has to be related.
Okay, but how do we ensure that that happens?
You can ask for a copy of the lease.
Okay. You give my point and some, I mean, I'm not as experienced as Mr. Horan, and I don't know all the details, but I think we ought to make this as tough and as robust as possible, and then weigh the pros and cons. And I don't, you know, painting it a matte color is kind of a weak ask.
I mean, there's not too many options, unfortunately.
Okay.
Because of the height, I mean, you're not...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Don Vols, 94 Chelsea Road. I've been listening very intently, and I understand that there is now a cell, a cell tower that is being looked for approval in Fishkill? No?
I believe it's in Beacon.
It's in Beacon?
No, it's down in Fishkill. It's down in Fishkill or...
All right, so let me, let me step back a little bit. Let me step back a little bit. The reason, this, the horse farm has acreage on, in both Fishkill and in Beacon. And the reason why it wasn't placed further back...
Fishkill and Wapton.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, Fishkill and Wapton. And the reason it wasn't put on a part of the farm that was Fishkill, because, because Fishkill had some type of a law saying they couldn't put cell towers up, something along that line. I don't know exactly what it was.
According to the applicant, there's no access to a public road back there. That was their reason, that they said they accessed through, that, you know, the Town of Wapton side is cleared and has a road out to Chelsea Road, whereas the parcel, parcel portion of the parcel in the Town of Fishkill backs up, I believe, on... And I believe Fishkill's code is written that the distance for the cell tower would be equal to the height of the tower. Is that correct?
I believe that's so.
Yeah, that was my question.
So where the town has a 750-foot radius, the Town of Fishkill, in this case, would be 150.
Well, I still think you guys got to be on our side. If it goes back to the judge, and the judge says, "You have no choice," then we have no choice. But I believe the town should be on the side of the people. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
I'm sorry, I just forgot one thing, which was when the cell tower was first being considered, the person who is most in touch with the woman who owns the farm said to me, "You got to vote yes on the cell tower, because the farm, the woman who owns the farm really needs the money." It was never about, we had perfect cell, cell coverage. It was never about cell coverage. It was about her making more money, because I guess she's losing money, but who else? We all need money. We don't go out and erect a cell tower just to make some money. But it was all originally conceived so that she could make extra money. It has nothing to do with cell tower coverage. None of us had bad coverage back then. And I think that because it was really only done for her to have a paycheck, it shouldn't be created. The rest of us are going to sit here and, and be struggling for years, and we're not going to call and say, "Hey, I want to put a cell tower on my, on my land, because I'll make an extra $50 a month." It should, it should, that needs to be remembered. No one's talked about this fact, that it wasn't done for self, this has not been done for cell coverage. It's done so that she could make more money. And we pay the price.
Don't, don't know if that's true in your case, however, through the vetting out process and the approval process, right? The applicant had to go well beyond that to prove the, to prove the need, right, for the cell tower in that location.
Right.
And then, you know...
And those things can be manipulated, can't they? Can those, those, those things, can they be manipulated?
With things?
The reports that there's a need.
Well, the town hired their own consultant to review the reports.
The town did?
Yes, and the consultant, in fact, the judge cited fairly extensively to the town's consultant, who agreed with, you know, the information that was provided by Verizon.
I just want to make sure you knew where it all started.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Does the board have any other questions or comments?
I don't.
I mean, just in regards to the conditions that we've discussed in our...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be appropriate this time to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
So I think on our end, one of the things that we have been considering important is, is maintaining the existing use of the land within a 750-foot radius of the tower, in the hope that the existing forest in there can remain, not be clear-cut for new housing, new condos, who knows what, if the property is sold. That's one of the conditions that we consider important, in terms of reaching a decision and not bringing it back to the judge, who would, you know, give his approval without that.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding, Jim, as you mentioned a couple of times, that if this were to go back to the court, the court would not impose any restrictions or conditions, whereas we can. It, it's possible, but, you know, the... Not likely. Not, you know, there's no guarantee. Understood, understood. One of the issues that was raised, which I think is actually not an unreasonable condition, is just to require the applicant to provide a copy of the lease. It can be redacted, but to just make, make sure that, that there is a provision in the lease that requires the tower to be removed in the case that it's no longer used. I think that's a reasonable condition as well.
So, so we can require that that be added to the lease?
Yes. Well, I...
Is that us or planning?
It's in probably, I mean, the Town of Wapton has one, two, two cell towers, three?
Airport Drive, Regency.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just talking about what we own. We have two that the town owns, and in both of those leases, there's a requirement that at the end, if it's no longer used, that it has to be removed. So that's a, that's a, basically, an industry standard, so... So we can request that a copy of the lease be posted to the town website, something like that? And if it's not in the lease, we can require it.
And that's the property owner's responsibility to get that tower down?
It's the, it would be the tower owner's responsibility to take it down.
Assuming you're still in business.
Right. Or any successor, you know, successor entity. It's, it's not, it flows with the tower, whoever the owner is. Cut. Any other questions, Jim, guys?
I've got something.
Go ahead.
Jim, just a couple of things. Number one, I would like to add the possible condition, I don't know exactly how to word it, but the lighting on the tower, I would like it to be minimal or non-existent. I would like it to be minimal or nonexistent. I just don't know what the FAA requires. I don't think we want to see any flashing red.
That, um, there is a, probably in the file, a determination from the FAA. But yeah, that certainly, I mean, that certainly can be on there. I, uh, I don't know, do we have a provision in our code requirement? I think we may.
Tower code needs to be.
May, so. But yeah, let, let me just pull up the tower code section.
Can I ask a question? Say, if I told you that according to the planning board documents, there's no light required.
There's no.
There's no FAA requirement from, according to the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that, that's an excellent question.
I'd like you for responding.
In some of the other discussions.
Excuse me, could you come up to the mic? Come up to the microphone again, please. Again, we did close the public hearing.
In some of the other discussions that we've been back and forth with the planning board, it was indicated that the cell provider, the tarpon towers, at any point in time, once the tower is erected, they could raise the height of it. Could a condition be that they can't do that?
That's permit, that's permitted under the telecommunications act. And they're permitted to go, what is it, 10% or 15 feet?
So that's not an option?
No. So, um, so under our telecommunications code, it says, unless required by the FAA, no night lighting of towers or the personal wire service facility, which is the, the, the ground mounted equipment, is permitted except for manually operated emergency lights for use only when operating personnel are on the site. So our code prohibits any lighting on already.
And then, Jim, there was one other thing, I think Barb talked about it. Something parties to enter consent judgment.
Right, so that was the other, the other issue is to.
Pete, you weren't there, so that's why.
To enter into a consent judgment to terminate the litigation.
I don't know, can you explain?
So with respect to, right now, there's still ongoing, there is actually a motion that's currently pending, where they're asking for the judge to issue, go ahead and issue the permit not to have it sent back to the boards. So the next, we had submitted, on Friday, we submitted our response to their motion, and their reply to ours, our response is due on the 23rd. And then it would be, again, we submit it to the court. So the discussion that we had was, in essence, to end the litigation, provided that, you know, the boards issue the approvals with the conditions.
Is that a condition that we have to, is that a condition or?
Yes, that would be a condition. So to the extent they do not terminate the litigation with us, then the variance is not granted.
I'm a little confused. So that, that's, that's going to be a condition that we need to put on our decision this evening?
Yes.
And the condition again is exactly what?
That the parties to the litigation between Tarpon Towers and the town of Wapton enter into a, enter into a consent judgment ordered by the court. I can formalize the language, because that's what we do. But in essence, you know, they agreed to, to settle the litigation.
Okay, got it. All right, anything else, you guys, yes, from the board?
I guess the one issue regarding the 750-foot buffer.
Did we want to allow agricultural buildings within the radius? Or, you know, the way we'd read the text was that there'd be no clearing of trees and no erection of any buildings within 750-foot radius of the tower.
That should, I guess, actually, they should be a condition, well.
Well, we had discussed an arborist, you know, stating a tree had to be removed due to disease or.
No tree shall be removed except for diseased trees, as certified by an arborist. And then it should be no new buildings, right, should be erected.
Except for agriculture.
Okay, I mean, that would be appropriate.
That's what I think we, that's what I thought we had.
Why don't we say, except, except no new building should be erected within the 750 feet, except for agricultural buildings in, within the cleared area?
So, prior to water, is that, is that why we have 750 feet is all?
750 feet is almost the whole property. Well, I mean, it's a good chunk of the property.
You see the property, it's all beautiful.
Well, that's what we're going to be, we're going to restrict.
Well, I mean, there's a.
We're going to restrict the, we're going to restrict the area.
I mean, there's a seven, there's a 750-foot buffer on the property. It basically takes up the entire property.
But you should, you should come and look at it, because where they're putting the tower, right below that is all, is all water.
Right.
And then this part is the.
Yeah, it's marshland, we don't see no lake.
Yeah.
But like the whole, there's, I don't know if this is a proper map or something.
Well, this is a partial access.
So there's the ponds.
Very much so.
So there's two ponds, but anyway.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, the 750-foot basically encompasses the entire property.
Right.
So, so I, I think that, you know, to, to the extent you provide for agricultural.
The goal would be to make sure that it could still be used as, as a horse farm going forward. So I think allowing those would be acceptable. I know there's been some discussion on revising the zoning in regards to cell phone towers. Does that, does that act? There's been some discussions in terms of the zoning being updated?
Yes.
In relation to cell phone towers?
And we, we are looking into that, but it wouldn't affect this decision.
I mean, can we add as a condition that, or as a recommendation, that we feel that that process should proceed? It seems like it would be.
Well, I mean, it's not a condition in this case, but I, I think that. I think that a separate letter from the board to the town board recommending changes to the telecommunications code, you know, would be appropriate. Wouldn't be a condition in this decision because it's not going to be, you know, the applicant.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Not required to do anything with respect to that. But I think you can, you can make that recommendation, you know, as a matter of course. Because, you know, it, it does, particularly with respect to the shot clock, it needs to be addressed in the code. And what, particularly what constitutes a complete application. Because the code is basically written before the shot clock provisions.
We will be looking at new code revisions shortly. So a letter from this board will hold weight that this is one of the codes that we revise at this point, make it in concert with the laws that stands.
How would that be issued? Is that something we'd have to discuss and agree to here?
After we're done here at the end of the meeting, you could just make a motion for B to send a letter to the town board recommending that they look into revising the current town code on cell towers as soon as possible.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Guys? Good? Okay. All right, based on the, the conditions, actually, that Mr. Haran had at the beginning of the meeting on the, the conditions that constitute a variance, I will read the decision of the ZBA. U.S. DJ, United States District Judge Karis, has ordered the town of Wapton to approve the application, but has granted the ZBA authority to impose reasonable.
Why don't we amend that to be consistent with the comments that were raised, is that has ordered the town of Wapton to make a decision within 60 days of his order.
So we're going to, I see. So you'll amend that?
I'm making the change right now.
Okay. Got that? Then, so, so then was that the U.S. DJ?
So, in our, it's U.S. DJ Karis has ordered the town of Wapton to make a decision within 60 days of his order, and has granted the ZBA authority to impose reasonable conditions. Or, and, or, I should, why don't we rephrase that to say, and has recognized that the ZBA has authority to impose. And then applying the public's utility standards for an area variance, it should be granted.
So the, so the application for the variance is granted subject to the following conditions. The variance is subject to site plan approval by the planning board. In the event the site plan approval is not granted, the variance shall expire. There shall be, as we discussed just shortly, there shall be no clearing of trees or the erection of buildings within that 70, 150-foot radius around the tower that lies on parcel 605603339420 to maintain a buffer between the tower and the surrounding trees. We would also like to add to that, that a copy of the lease.
Okay, so why don't we, as was discussed with respect to the conditions, the erection of new buildings. What did we say, new non-agricultural buildings?
Non-new buildings in the 750-foot ballpark, except for ag-related buildings.
Okay, so she'll. Yes. It's only on that property. Because nobody, none of the neighbors are subject to the application and not before the board. And this board has no authority to tell any of the neighbors what they can do. Okay? Interestingly enough, a neighbor can put up a new house within 750 foot of a tower if they choose. So.
Also add to that, that any tree felling has to be by, has to be certified by an arborist, that the tree is diseased.
Okay, so why don't we make them as separate, separate conditions?
Right, I think we should break them out.
So we'll make them as separate conditions. There shall be no clearing of trees. Show no clearing of, um, trees. Within that portion of the 700-foot radius around the tower that lies on the floor to maintain a buffer between the tower and the surrounding houses, except that. Was it diseased trees or?
Except for trees that are dead or dying and certified by an arborist or other profession that can certify that.
Except that, why don't we just say diseased trees?
Dead or dying?
Diseased or dying, diseased, dead or dying trees. Maybe removed, um, upon certification by an arborist. Or similar professionals.
Right, because we sometimes get forest rangers.
Yeah, forest rangers, yeah.
That come in, so I don't want to limit it just to an arborist.
And then, um. Why don't we say there shall be no, no erection of non-agricultural buildings? Does that, does that work?
Residential.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that would limit, I mean, that would allow for theoretically a commercial building.
And on a farm, they could put houses for farm markets, that would fall under market.
Yeah. So there should be no erection of new, non-agric, because it's already houses.
Yeah, right.
So no erection of new, non-agricultural buildings, right?
We also had the, you know, we wanted to make a copy of the lease, of the lease, the lease available to the public?
Provide a redacted copy of the lease that demonstrates that the cell tower will be removed from the property at the end of the lease term.
If the lease doesn't say that, would this kind of push them to add that, or?
Oh, a lease. So, right, so we'll make it so that provide a copy of a lease.
Does that include that from, or from channel man or from condos and other houses?
Well, the, the condition is only agricultural buildings, barns, greenhouses. Yes, you couldn't put a subdivision in there or a park. And then parties to enter into a consent judgment.
The, is that the litigation language?
Right. Jim, is it important, the code favors?
Yeah, I think it's.
It's in the lighting code. It's in our code.
Shall enter.
Make sure that they, that's what I like to put.
I'm just saying, I think, I think it hurts to say it twice.
It's a ready condition.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be specified?
No.
Thank you.
Then we have. Was that, was that, I think, all the conditions, right? Jim, you got anything?
So here are the conditions. The variance is subject to a site plan approval by the planning board. In the event site plan approval is not granted, this variance shall expire. There shall be no clearing of trees within that portion of the 750-foot radius around the tower that lies on parcel 339420, to maintain a buffer between the tower and the surrounding houses, except that diseased, dead or dying trees may be removed upon certification by an arborist or similar professional. There shall be no erection of new, non-agricultural buildings within that portion of the 750-foot radius around the tower that lies on parcel 339420, to maintain a buffer between the towers and the surrounding houses. Provide a redacted copy of a lease that demonstrates that the cell tower will be removed from the property at the end of the lease term. The parties in the litigation, Verizon Wireless East LP versus the town of Wapanger, shall enter into a consent judgment filed with and approved by the court.
He does everything. I mean, that's all the conditions we were had in mind. So there will be a roll call?
Could it say on the property, on the property of the cell tower, 750 feet?
Yeah.
So, yes, what we will have to do now is roll call?
A motion.
Oh, could we, oh, so a motion to, to grant the applicant the variance with the conditions?
Yeah.
As set forth. Have a motion? I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance, based on the conditions you previously read through, Jim. You have a second?
A second.
All favor?
Take a roll call.
Yeah, roll call, please?
John.
John, give a roll call.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. The applicant's variance has been granted with the conditions set forth. Thanks, everyone, for your comments. All right, next order of business tonight is appeal number 217740, interpretation. Ron Evangelista et al., Town of Wapanger Zoning Board of Appeals will conduct an adjourned public hearing on an interpretation of 24052C, 24021D, 24015 of the non-residential schedule definition of mixed uses of the district zoning regulations in an HM zoning district. The applicant is seeking an interpretation of the zoning administrator, Barbara Roberti's interpretation of the zoning code dated June 20th, 2021. The property is located at 123-125 New Hamburg Road, 2357 Route 9D, 2361-2365 Route 9D, and is identified as tax credit number 615701048643.21 acres, 0.57542, I'm sorry, 642, 0.20 acres, and 057654, 0.69 acres, and 059643, 0.14 acres, and 040637, 0.5 acres in the town of Wapanger. Public hearing, January 25th, 2022, public hearing adjourned to March 22, 2022. Can I have a, a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, here we are going. You got a second? Okay. All favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, so we are going to adjourn this public hearing again to the April 26th zoning board meeting. So if I have a motion, please, to.
I would just put on the record that this was agreed to by all attorneys.
Okay. That this, this adjournment was agreed to by all attorneys involved in this application. That being said, can I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing to the April 26th ZBA meeting?
I will make a motion that we adjourn till the April 26th.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. So that would conclude our business.
Do you want to go back to, I think we did, the suggestion, not asking the town board to entertain revising the cell towers?
Yeah, is that something we have to vote on? Is that, we would vote on issuing a letter?
You could make a motion to have me write the letter.
What's the, what's the end game in there? I missed that. What, what is the purpose of renegotiating the town code?
So the cell, it gives you reverse, but the cell tower has to be moved out in 2022.
So, so one of the things that, you know, I believe our code was adopted in 1990, probably originally in 93, and then in 98. The shot clock provisions were adopted probably around 1998. What happens is that the telecommunications act itself had kind of broad language. It just said that the, a local municipality shall not unreasonably delay processing of an application. And so that was the act of Congress, and then the FCC, being the agency that administers cell towers, then adopted regulations which have kind of evolved over time as cell technology has changed. And so as part of those regulations that came down the pipe, they put in hardened, fast rules regarding the processing of applications. And they actually evolve over time based on the type of installation. So most recently, you've seen the 5G applications that come in are much smaller than towers. So there's a shot clock, I don't, it's like 120 days, I believe, it's, it's short, it might even be less than that, so. And the shot clock is based on whether or not, so the longest shot clock is 180 days for a new tower. And then they get shorter if you co- locate on an existing building, or then it's, I believe it's 90 days, it might be less than that.
So we basically want to make a motion to authorize?
I just, I, I think what, what, um, what the, what the board should do is just authorize B on behalf of the board to draft a letter to the town board that says that, you know, in light of applications that the zoning board has had in the past, and particularly with respect to this application, that it would help, that you believe it's in the best interest of the town to update its telecommunications zoning restrictions.
All right, so B, I'll make a motion to authorize you to send a letter to the town board based on recent applications to the town board, take a good hard look at the current codes, and to update accordingly.
I'll second.
Thomas, again. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, so no more business before the board tonight. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Have a second?
As long as everybody's in, Jim, you're good, and Barb's good, fine.
We're good. All right, all favor?
Aye.
So moved, we are adjourned.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.